Hi, good afternoon, everybody. We are here to calling to order this meeting workshop at 5:00 PM, 2024-2025 School Budget Review. Information to be covered includes finalizing the 2024-2025 school budget.
Thank you, Paula. The, we have our last school committee budget workshop this evening scheduled prior to the school, the regular school committee meeting later this evening at 6:00. And at that meeting, an agenda item is to approve the 2024-2025 school budget so that we can pass on that school budget to the city council. And though that budget, along with the city's budget, will start the process of the city council budget workshops. Those will happen every Tuesday beginning in March. The first one will be March 5th. At that time is when both the city and the school will give overviews of their school budgets. The following Tuesday, March 12th, is when the school department will present our budget in greater detail to the city council. The following Tuesday after that, the third Tuesday of the month, that is when the city council, on March 19th, that is when they will present their budget. And then later that evening, at the regular city council meeting, is when there will be a public hearing on the 2024-2025 budget for both the city and the school. We've done a lot of work to this point. If you want to go to the next slide, Beth, and with that, you'll see that when we started on January 29th, we brought in a budget that had expense increase of $5,676,263. That was 9.2%. The impact there on taxation was 29.4%. At our February 5th, School Committee Budget Workshop, we made recommended changes there of $786,223 on the expense side. And then also on the taxation side, we made recommendation changes there of $23,611. Those changes brought us down to an 8% increase in expenses and a 17.2% increase in taxation. At our School Committee Budget Workshop on the 12th, we made further adjustments on the expense side, reductions of $1,115,774. And then on the taxation side, same amount, $1,115,774. That resulted in an expense increase of $3,774,266, an expense increase of 6.1, and a taxation increase of $1,703,000, and that's a 10.4% increase. That's where we were after the 12th. If we want to go to the next slide, this evening, we have some further considerations for you to consider. With those, I'll jump right into those if people are okay. You can see out of the first one we have is adjusting the mentor stipends. This is a total of $2,329. We felt we could do that because we are losing a number of teacher positions with that. So we felt that that was the proper adjustment and knowing that we're not going to need as many mentors as we've had previously. Also, there's an adjustment there in one of the department head stipends that is also related to other considerations that people have already made, that we've already made prior. That's a savings of $4,226. We're also looking to restructure the grade level leader stipends. You'll notice that those were covered before in title, used title funds. We have moved those over into the local budget, and then we've done some further reductions, or restructuring, rather. That's a savings of $15,582. We also recommending removing a bridge teacher. We've looked at this. There's a situation right now where there is an ed tech position that is currently being used in the teaching position. So that was something that, as we went through that, we feel comfortable in being able to recommend the reduction of the bridge teacher. That is not going to impact in terms of what we've got for current enrollment, but also the ability for us to also expand. And the total there is a reduction of $90,880. We also looked at the Sanford Performing Arts Center budget. That's a budget that's shared between the school committee as well as their revenue account as well. And so that was something that we were able to have further reductions there. For the microphone receivers, that's a savings of $3,226. We also, as we looked at this budget and the challenges that we have and all the hard decisions that have to be made, it's hard for us to also dedicate $50,500 to the bleachers at Cobb Stadium. So that's something else that's being removed here. Another thing that we're looking to do is restructure the technology repair. And as we restructure the technology repair, in essence, what that was, was we had technology that, very proud in Sanford, that we're a one-to-one school district. But many of that, those replacement costs or damage costs were picked up by ESER funds. That's no longer going to be available. And so now we're going to go back where we can be able to, now go back to what we'd done prior to that, where there'd be a fee coming in for anybody who has replacement or damage for that. And we're looking at that of $10,000 of impacting the budget. We also look further at the special education budget, and they can do some restructuring of some administrative assistance to move one-fourth of that to the IDEA budget. So that would be making one-fourth of that. It's going from 50% to 75%, and that would be a savings or an impact on the budget of We also look further into our supply budget, knowing that there's going to be one less art teacher at Sanford High School. We can also reduce art supplies. So there's a savings of another $60,000 from our lat-
Six, six thousand.
Six thousand. Sorry. Thank you. Just, once again, making sure everyone's following me here. But no, six thousand, thank you. And then also looking at the counseling receptionist position at Sanford High School of moving that back into the budget. That's going to be an adjustment of $50,301 back in. So when you look at the total of our budget considerations for this evening, that comes out to a total of $162,718. I do want to go to the next slide because that will show you what we did on February 12th. On February 12th, the changes that we made that had totaled $1,115,774 were, we decreased tuition reimbursement costs. We did move two ed techs from the bridge program into the IDEA budget. We also removed a resource room teacher at Sanford Middle School, two additional teachers at Sanford Middle School due to enrollment, the phys ed health education teacher at the high school. We also looked at the elimination of five ed tech positions, so some restructuring through that throughout the district. I already mentioned the counseling receptionist. That's recommended to go back in. We also looked at the attendant, removing the attendance coordinator position, and also the removal of the Sanford High School Alternative Learning Program, which, by that is the salary and benefits for three and a half teachers that were dedicated to that program. So that's the budget considerations we did on February 12th. We go to the next slide, you'll see what we did on February 5th. On the expense side, we removed the boiler. We also removed the requested assistant athletic director position. There are a number of some athletic one-time costs for some equipment. We moved additional hours for the athletic trainer. There are also a number of high school one-time costs, more on supplies and equipment as well. We did remove an MCS teacher. We decreased the high school, one of the high school administrative assistants at the high school, the school year only. We removed the academic literacy coaches. We were able to move them, remove them from the local budget through some restructuring that they went into the Title I budget. We removed two ed techs from SRTC, and we removed some supply costs from SRTC as well. The total of those changes on February 5th were $786,223. That evening, we also did some revenue adjustments. We did receive additional subsidy for adult education of $43,963. We also were able to increase a cost share with our sending schools to SRTC. That had a savings of just under $200,000. We also recommended the use of some health insurance reserves for $475,000 and the use of carryover funds of $500,000. So on that revenue adjustment side, that was totaled out to one, over $1,217,388. So the grand total of what we made on February 5th would be $2,3,611 for that. Now, so if you look at what we've done since our first meeting on the 29th, and now if you add in the recommended changes, the recommended considerations for this evening, that totaled That will bring our increase in expenses from 6.1% down to 5.9%, and that total will be $3,611,548. There's also bringing our taxation down when we reduced by 162,718. That taxation goes down of a savings of 10 point, from taxation increase of 10.4 down to 9.4. Okay? So that's what we, what it would look like if we were doing that. I just want to point out that the total expense changes that we've made from when we started has been reduced by over $2,000,000, $2,64,715. And the taxation changes that we've made has been a reduction of $3,282,103. That's just the totals of where we are to this point. I do want to go to the next slide because I think it's important to also understand as we look at some of these changes, that some of these things are beyond our control. Main state retirement for non-teachers, which we're responsible for, went down from 10.2% to 9.9%. So that did reduce the general fund by $8,117. The main state retirement for teachers did not change this year, so there's no budget increase there. Our Harvard Health Insurance, which is the health insurance carrier for our teachers, our ed techs, our administrative assistants in our food service, that, we've estimated that as an increase of 17.5%. And that would be $1,159,242. That's what we've come back in to put into this budget. As you know, we've had workshops earlier on health insurance. We did meet with our benefits specialists in terms of, and she's concerned that we could also be looking at an increase that could be higher than that 17.5. That's something that we should be getting that information any day now, at the end of this month, the beginning of that for. The Anthem Insurance has been estimated at an 8% increase. Anthem Insurance is for two of our smaller units. That's our custodians and our administrators. That will be an increase in the budget of $63,537. We usually don't get that till more towards April in terms of beginning to see exactly what that renewal is going to be. And then there's also Family Medical Leave Act. There's a tax that will be starting January 1st of 2025. So that'll be halfway through our 2024-2025 budget. And so as we're looking at that, that's going to be a tax that looks like the school department's portion of that is increasing our budget by $85,226. So I think it's important to also point those out, that those are some things that are impacting in this budget. You go to the next, so our expenses, okay, when you look at that, have increased by 5.9% or $3,611,548. I do want to point out to the, to everyone that for us, just to turn our page for our existing budget, 2024, 2000, 2023, 2024, just to turn our page into this year with, to do that, is going to see an increase of 5%, $3,092,517. I think it's important that people be able to understand the big picture here when you're looking at much of what our budget is, is mostly due to personnel, and that's due to wages and benefits, and a lot of things in some situations are fixed costs. Our enrollment there, it hasn't changed based on the considerations that we're putting forward this evening. There's an enrollment spreadsheet. We don't have to hit that, but that's still in there for people who are interested. Just a reminder, all of these materials, these presentations will be on our website for people to come back and be able to access them for that. Now, through all of what I've said, here's how it impacts, here's how it impacts our budget by our articles. And so the first one is Article One, that's regular instruction. That's increased by 4.3% or $759,197. Our turn the page portion of that article has increased 6.2%, $1,082,377. There are some added positions to the 2024-2025 budget. I'm not calling those new positions. They're added positions. These are positions that, when you see the ones that are by asterisks, the asterisk after those, those are currently positions that we've had that are currently being paid by ESER funds, that the ESER funds are scheduled to end in September of 2024. So when you look at those, you'll have social worker positions at all of our elementary schools and the middle school. And then you'll also have an elementary art teacher and elementary music teacher. And then there's also an ESOL, English of a Second Language teacher at MCS. You'll notice that there's an additional teacher there also for ESOL teacher. That is not, one of those positions is currently covered by ESER funds. The other one is a new position. That would be a new position that's added to our budget. And then I point that out because remember, in our subsidy, that we preliminary subsidy report that we received from the state, we got an additional funding of $185,681 in, for us, for ESOL. And so as you can look at it, we're using what that increase was to be able to go and pay for the two ESOL teachers. Even doing that, we do come up short by $18,933, okay? In addition, also on there is a study hall ed tech at Sanford High School. That's currently being covered by ESER funds. That's something for us to be able, that's an important position for us to have to make sure we can meet the contractual requirements that we do have, to be able to provide the necess, that position, to provide the necessary coverage. And then there are also three pre-K ed techs that were funded in this current budget at 50%. The other 50% of those three positions was covered in a grant. That grant's going away, so that 50% of those three ed tech positions, a total of $58,850. You'll notice that that, we knew that, that wasn't something that was going to be a surprise to us. We knew that the grant was going away for us to be able to come back. Once again, pre-K ed techs were mandated there that for all, we're allowed to have 16 students in every pre-K classroom, but for every 16 students, we need one teacher and one ed tech. That's also part of that requirement. So the total of those positions, if you can go back there, Beth, the total of those positions is just under $800,792,78. Moving on, there's some other items in Article One that were removed from the budget. I've already talked about two academic coaches. They were moved from the local budget into the Title I budget as we did a lot of restructuring there to be able to make that happen. Removing an MCS fourth grade teacher. And then we also had some one-time costs for some equipment at the middle school and the high school as well. And then on February 12th, the changes that we made there for the positions that you can see, removing the high school phys ed health teacher, removing two Sanford Middle, additional Sanford Middle School teachers due to enrollment, restructuring our ed techs, removing the attendance coordinator position at Sanford High School, removing the Alternative Learning Program at Sanford High School with the savings there, and then adjusting tuition reimbursement, $26,761, and some other costs that we were able to find some other savings of $52,748. And then this evening, we're bringing in a couple more department head stipend and reducing the art supplies is another $10,000 there. We move on to Article Two, Special Education. That's increased $14,000 in, 14.7%, $1,592,270. Our turn the page for that was 9.4% or $1,016,120. You'll notice that there are some added positions in the budget. I once again say added because these are four positions that we currently have that are covered by ESER funds that are ending in September. There's a total there of $264,101. But there's also some adjustments that are being made also to help balance that out. Removing the Sanford Middle School Resource Room teacher, moving two ed techs into, for the bridge into IDA, the administrative assistant change that I talked about earlier in the special ed department, and moving that bridge teacher to be able to help understand that, we understand that if we are moving some positions over, that we also are looking at making sure that there may be some other positions or some restructuring that we can do. Article Three, CTE, this is our SRTC. That increased 7.5% or $304,757. I do want to point out that there was a new revenue that we received here as we were able to reach a cost sharing agreement with our sending schools. That's going to save the Sanford School Department budget just under $200,000. For us, just to turn the page in Article Three, that's an increase of 6.5%, $264,674. There were some positions there that were currently, that were in this budget, covered by Perkins. We moved those to the local budget, the career planning coordinator, special projects manager. We offset that by reducing the supplies and assessments that were in the local budget that we were able to move into Perkins. It was just more of some restructuring there for us to be able to cover that. There is one added position that is an ESER, currently covered by ESER. That's an ed tech that is able for the Sanford Regional Technical Center. A portion of that person's day is at the early childhood program that also assists with the pre-K program for the coverage that is necessary there. We also, on February 5th, removed two, that should say requested, additional two ed techs, removed two requested additional ed techs there, and we moved in more additional, just under $20,000, supplies and assessments also to Perkins. So I think you're really seeing us being able to use the budget between the cost sharing as well as the Perkins budget for us to be able to maximize that in ways to help SRTC. Article Four, Other Instruction. This is mainly athletics. That's increased 4.9% or $58,942. You'll see that the turn the page part of that is 4%, 48,347. You'll see on the left-hand side, the new items in the budget. That would be a stipend for first-team volleyball supported by the interest, some other costs to go around with that first-team volleyball, as well as the student accident insurance that's covered for our district, as well as the family ID program at the MCS. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see items that were requested, but we did remove those from the budget. The assistant athletic director position, as well as some more equipment there that you can see added to that this evening is the bleachers from Cobb that we're recommending that people also take that up for this evening. I do want to point out that $15,000 of the expense was added back to Article Nine for the mowing. Remember, the mowing is something that has been moved over from the city into our budget. We were initially trying to look at combining that with the assistant athletic director position. We decided not to do that, so by moving the assistant athletic director position out, we also have to take in that $15,000 in expense for the mowing. Okay? Article Five, Student and Staff Support. That is our counselors, nursing, library, curriculum, and technology. That's increased 5.6% or $227,770. For us to just turn the page on that, it's 4.1% and an increase of $164,940. There are some new positions, new items in that budget. They, I wouldn't call them new positions. They're new items in the local budget. There's a middle school school counselor that's currently covered by ESER funds, and then there's a grade level leader stipends. Remember, those were in, covered by a grant. The grant ended. That's giving us an added cost of $31,164. You'll see this evening that we did recommend some restructuring of that below in red. So that number will change from $31,164. It'll, we'll subtract $15,582 from that. We're also adjusting the mentor stipends, and the restructuring of the technology repairs also go into Article Five. Article Six, System Admin. With that, that's an increase of 6.5%, $69,966. That's moving, primarily most of that increase is coming from moving an administrative assistant from 50% that was covered into Title as part of our restructuring process. That's not needed. That's moving into the local budget, $37,932. And you'll see that the turn the page for that has increased 3%, $32,034. Article Seven, School Administration. For that, that is increased by 4.2%, $112,576. The turn the page for that is 1.9% or $51,134. You'll notice that there is a new item in that budget. It's not a new position. This is a nursing assistant at Sanford Middle School. That was something that was covered by ESER funds. The total cost of that is $73,620. There are some things not continuing in that budget, reducing the high school administrative assistant to that school year only for a savings of $12,177. Article Eight, Transportation. This is one where it's increased by 18.8% or $402,969. The turn the page for that is at the same, is exactly the same for that. We, when it comes to transportation for us, we don't own our own buses. So we did receive subsidy, additional subsidy of $103,986, but you'll see that that won't cover all of the increases that we have. This was something where we went out to bid this year, and we did receive two bids. We did choose the lowest bid, but it still has that increase. Also, part of that is an increase in our costs for special education transportation. The monitors also that are a part of that, their, their costs also increased. So that's where you're seeing a big impact there in terms of transportation that we really don't have any control over. Article Nine, Facilities Maintenance. That's up 3.4%, just over $200,000. That turn the page part is 3.1, just under $200,000. I mentioned we added back in the mowing. That's being transferred over by the city, but we did remove that second boiler, backup boiler for Willard of $221,148. Article Ten is Debt Service. This is mainly just a pass-through for us in debt service. So it's decreased by 1.6% of $171,769. You'll see that that's the same exact thing for the turn the page because that is coming right through the state on our debt service for that. Article Eleven, All Other Expenditures. This is where we house WSSR TV in the Performing Arts Center. That's increased by 11.7%, but it's only an increase of $12,522. When you look at the turn the page, we did this evening recommending to consider removing the new equipment microphone receiver, piece that was in there of $3,226. Moving on, it doesn't have its own article, but Sanford Moving on, it doesn't have its own article, but Sanford Community Adult Education is separate, and so they increased 5.8% or 33,079. The turn the page for that actually went down because we did receive our state subsidy, as I mentioned earlier, that subsidy was an increase from what we were expecting to receive, and with that, the net taxation of that is actually decreasing by 10,797. Okay, so when you look at this budget, that is currently in front of you and being presented this evening, there are local positions, there are grant positions, and there are ESER positions not continuing in this 2024-2025 school year. They total 34 positions. And so as you go through, the first one of the ones that are in Article One, all right? I do want to point out that there are obviously a number of ESER positions that we were, that are not continuing, that we were planful in understanding that. I also want to point out that there's also some other teachers that were in this year's, I should say positions, there are some other positions in this, that were currently in the local budget this year that we're recommending removal. I've already gone over those, the middle school has two teachers due to enrollment. At the high school, looking at, when you look at the elimination of the alternative learning program, you'll see that there's teachers that come out of that, high school social studies teacher, high school, high school English teacher, high school science teacher, and we're able to also absorb a high school math teacher. It's half coming out of the alternative learning program and half coming out of the other program, the regular Sanford High School program. There's also the phys ed and health position from the high school that is currently in this year's budget. And then some additional positions coming out, high school social studies teacher, and then there's also the high school attendance coordinator, and then there's five ed techs throughout the district that are also being removed. So you'll notice that there are some positions in there that are currently funded by ESER, okay? And we understand that a directive that we had was not to be able to move ESER positions into the local budget. Well, we are doing that, and we're doing that because there's a purpose behind that, that we're doing that because it's meeting the needs that we have and the priorities, but we're also looking at it that we understand that it's being offset also by some other positions that are in the regular budget. When you go down to Article Two, that's Special Education, as I pointed that out, you'll see that there's some ESER positions that are being, that we currently have this year that are being removed, an ed tech self-contained at CJL, a special ed ed tech at MCS, and, but there's also, and then there's also the behavior interventionist at the middle school as well as the behavior interventionist for the district, those are also being removed from ESER. And then there is the resource room teacher that is not, that is currently in the local budget, but that once again is being done with the idea of trying to prioritize in terms of understanding that there are a few ESER positions coming over from special ed to also be able to be in this budget. Article Six, Central Office, our communications coordinator, that's not continuing in the, that's currently funded by ESER positions. As we look at that, that is, we're also looking at some restructuring there with that, but that, those funds in that position will be eliminated. The, there's an administrative assistant also currently covered at the middle school by ESER funds that also won't be covered. And then also, there's a, our substance use counselor that is housed at the middle school and the high school, that's currently covered by a grant. That grant is going away at the end of this year, and that position is not being moved into the local position. So there's where you can see 34 positions with a combination of coming from ESER, grant, and local positions are being able to look at that budget. If we go to the next, so what you're looking at this evening is the expenses and taxation. If the considerations are accepted this evening, as laid out, you'll see that the increase in expense will be 3,611,548,000. That will be reduced from our original 9.2% increase in expense down to 5.9. And you'll notice that the taxation will be 1,540,394, and that will end with 9.4% increase in taxation. So what we'd be recommending putting forth this evening at our school committee meeting to follow this budget workshop will be a total appropriations for the budget vote will be a total of 65,098,610,000. I do want to stop here because there's a lot of numbers that are coming into that. And when you look at a lot of numbers, I don't want people to get lost in that, to feel like we're just getting buried in the numbers. I'm very much aware that there's a lot of things behind those numbers and behind those considerations. And I know it's not a situation where you're looking at it to say, yeah, we're making these decisions without understanding impact. I can look at everybody to know that everything that's there that is being removed from this budget is something that is definitely going, it's going to impact us. And you're talking about that, that I know from here, the idea wasn't to be able to, we're talking about positions and we're talking about programs that have been part of us for a while, that have been successful in doing that. It's not a reflection on any particular position or any particular person or any particular program. These are really hard decisions for us as we're looking at trying to balance what we can to do the best job of meeting the needs of the, as many students as we can be able to come back and do that way, at the same time, looking at what the impact is going to be on the overall budget and on our taxpayers. And so I want to be able to say that because it can really get lost as we start throwing a lot of numbers around to be able to look at. It hasn't been easy, it's been very challenging, this is very difficult work. It wasn't something that was done lightly, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, a lot of thought and consideration and a lot of information by trying to come back to look at data, knowing that no matter what you do, there's going to be an impact. No matter what you do, there's going to be something where we're going to be able to, as a school department, do our best to continue to move forward when it's going to be really difficult. And so I leave people with that as we run through that presentation to be able to see if there are any questions or anybody else has any other further comments.
So could we just go back to Article One? And Cheryl, do you have the enrollment numbers there? Or Steve, do you have the enrollment numbers per school? I just think it's important to note for the positions that were added, I know we talked about the MCS ESOL teacher as well as the Sanford Pride ESOL teacher, but if we could just quickly review enrollment at MCS, CJL, Sanford Pride, SMS, and the high school, because I feel like it gives a little bit of context when we're adding positions, potentially how many students are being touched by that position. So especially in those elementary schools, when we're adding an art teacher and a music teacher, that's quite a lot of students that are being impacted by that addition. Does that make sense?
Do you want me to read through the numbers that we have for current?
Yes.
So the current student total enrollment for Carl Lamb School is 424. At Margaret Chase Smith School, current student enrollment is 425. Over at Sanford Pride Elementary, student enrollment is 378. Over at Sanford Middle School, we're looking at 918 students. And at Sanford High School, we're looking at 1,084. And that Sanford High School number, that is just Sanford High School students, that does not include the regional technical students from our sending schools. And when you're looking at our ESOL enrollment numbers, we are over 120 now, I believe, as for our latest enrollment. So our ESOL population is increasing dramatically over the past year, and that's why the additional positions are requested there.
But as noted, those positions, we received additional subsidy for.
Correct, correct.
Yes.
And just also on that list, the pre-K ed techs, the 50% with three, there's 16 in each class, so if you have three of them, that would be 48 students there. And once again, that is something that we're required to be able to have that 16 to two ratio for our pre-K program.
Matt, could you just explain a little bit, because sometimes when we're doing the numbers, like you said, getting lost in the numbers. Let's go to Article Four, for example. When it says an increase of 4.9% or 58,942, when we do the math of the new items in the budget, obviously that doesn't come up to 58,942. And that's true of every slide, we can see the increase, and I just think it's worth noting that those increases are also reflective of our increase in salaries and benefits, so that people better understand that.
Right, so the turn the page is with the salary and benefits as we know it as of today, and that's what we would use for the turn the page, and the difference between that and above in the amount for, so on Article Four, you were talking, right? So 4% is your turn the page, the 4.9% is the additions of these items.
But for example, in that article, you're going to see there's some contractual things like for our referees, right? There's already, we know that the referees are going to have an increase in what their payment is for the upcoming year. So that's something that's factored in also to be able to see what that increase is. Stipends are going to be something that you could be able to also look at that as well.
Right, also in Article Four is the increase in transportation because they take their own buses for the athletics, which had a 12% increase.
Yeah, and so I just wanted to let folks know, for someone who's not a mathematician, that, you know, if you turn to Article Five and you see that student and staff support, you might be like, wow, that's a really big number, like, you know, are we really, you know, are we absorbing 227,770 in new expenses? It's not new expenses. It's important for folks to know that the large majority of what we're absorbing aren't positions, it's existing positions, salary and benefits. And I just think that's really important to clarify for folks because they're pretty big numbers, and you can get lost in that.
Correct.
Article Eight, again, I think it's worth noting that, you know, we talk about the things we can control and we can't control, you know, so you're looking at 400,000 in expense that we cannot control, you know? And so I think that's important for folks to know that as well, that, you know, that is a contract, we went out to bid, this is the cost of the new contract of transportation.
And I just want to add the transportation piece, we were, we had a five-year contract that over those five years, it was a 3% increase, and so that large increase, it just, time has caught up with us with that, and significant amount is due to salaries and benefits to get drivers in the seats to drive our buses. So I think it's just important for people to know, it's catching up with us all at once because of that five-year contract we had.
And we did note that our overall turn the page expense is over 3 million. So that's just apples for apples, that's not adding anything extra, that's just operations in general.
That was taking the employees and benefits from this current year and just rolling them forward with all the new rates. And you got to think 1.2 million was of health insurance alone.
And with a 3.2, almost 3.3 million of us doing all this hard work, cutting everything from supplies to positions, I mean, we're still at a 9.4% taxation, which is, you know, our community just can't really bear. So this is, it's a lot of work to get here.
So if it's okay, I guess, it's a workshop, so we're not taking any action this evening, but what you saw this evening is what is going to be presented. And the new information that you have is the, going back, Beth, if you don't mind, that slide that totals, it's like the third slide, 162,000?
This one?
Nope. Third slide. Nope.
Going to hit escape and go this way, this one, right here.
That's it, yep. So right now, are there any questions on the considerations, the changes for this evening? Questions or concerns? The plan is to move forward, and so that at, the plan will be this evening, and as the regular meeting starts in 15 minutes, that I will once again go over the presentation quickly with that. But I think there's people who've been paying attention can be able to see, and even if you haven't, you'll be able to see the different recordings and the different things that will be on our website for people. But this evening, you're going to be looking at those changes, and then if you could go to the, a couple more slides past that, keep going, keep going, right there, that's what you're going to be seeing this evening for that. Are there any questions about that or any concerns that people have?
So can we, I'm sorry, I like, don't know, with all of my papers throughout all these meetings, I've somehow lost what I really wanted. So just going, and Cheryl, I hate to do this to you, but the meeting, like, the, to add back alt-ed into this budget, what does that put us at? With, I can't find it. Sorry, can I have that again?
That would bring you to a 6.4% increase in expense and 11.4% in taxation. And that is adding in alternative ed, alternative learning only, 335,000.
I, you know, for me, I feel that we're going to be going backwards by that change and by that cut, and I'm just, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that today. I understand the taxation, I understand it all, I just feel like, like I said, we're going to be going backwards, and I just, I, I can't agree with that today.
So Amy, I hear what you're saying, and I don't think any of us like this, but where do we get the money from? I mean, we have scoured all of these papers, I don't know where we get the money from. The community cannot absorb an 11.4% taxation. I don't even think they're going to be able to absorb 9.4. I think the city's going to come back to us and tell us we need to be lower than that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would all like to, I mean, I echo your sentiment, we all do, but I keep going back to that fundamental question, then where? Where do we get it from? Because even a few years ago, like when we first got on the school board, I remember one of the school committee, one of the conversations was, okay, well then, we're going to start looking at those little pieces, you know, the harmonica or the, you know, Brett's been waiting to get his little microphone for like years now, and that was one of the things that we were... things that we were like, we're gonna have to start cutting, and we've already done all that.
And if not this year, it's like, where do we find it next year? Again, going back to that taxation increase, you know, if you look at our ALIS numbers for the community, they cannot afford an 11.4% taxation increase, they can't afford a 9% taxation increase. We have families slipping into homelessness status on the daily who live in housing that they do not own, and there will not be an investment property owner who absorbs that taxation increase. That will continue to be passed along to tenants. And that, where it stands now is not sustainable for our families to remain housed. So I echo Emily's sentiment, I think that it's incredibly difficult work. I'm like, if, everybody would argue if we could fund it, we would fund it, and everyone's gonna have a different opinion as to how it could be funded. But I would just remind everyone that we have over 3,000 students in this district, and we are charged with the responsibility of educating all 3,000 of them appropriately.
And it goes back to also that duplication of services. When the alt program was first established, there was, there was not $3 million in our budget for social workers and counselors. So with the additional services and the extra support, these kids have a support that they didn't have when this program began. And also, it go, I agree, it does go back to 9.4%, I don't think we're done. We still have more digging to do, so it's kinda where it's at.
Okay, so as I mentioned, we'll look forward to this evening, the plan would be to take action, the total appropriations for the 2024-2025 budget will be 65,098,610,000. Will be what is presented under the new business for this evening. Next steps would be, if that is approved, if the school committee approves that, then we will go on to the city council, works, budget workshops will begin next Tuesday, and there'll be every Tuesday in March that will lead right up to the first Tuesday in April where the school commit, the city council rather, would approve the 2024-2025 budget. That's when it then goes from there, that's what will go out into the June referendum, which will go to all the voters in Sanford in June. That's the process that we have. And as I said, depending on what happens going forward, we, I don't think our work is done in terms of us being able to come back and continue to be able to look at making sure we're working towards that process of the budget getting approved by the city council in April, I'm with that, so.
I just had one more quick thing, sorry, I found it when we were talking. This FMLA tax is 85,000, is that included in the 9.4 because, okay, I didn't remember it being brought up at the last, okay.
Yep, no, that is, no, and, and that, and, and, they're still wor, right, no, unfortunately it is. They're, and still working that out, but the guidance that we've received is that that's what we should be planning for, putting in the budget, so that is, that's gonna be a cost for us, yep. Okay, so I would probably recommend adjournment, that we can then be able to transition to move into the regular meeting at six.
Okay, recommend, excuse me, recommendation to adjourn this meeting at, what time do you have, Matt? 5:53. So moved. Thank you, Melissa, seconded by Emily. All in favor? All in favor?